Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the meetings are ordered. Today is Monday, May 12, 2025. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcasts. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. And may I have a motion to open the school committee?
Someone?
Sir?
And we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordiero? Yes. Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Houtcroft?
Yes.
And Mrs. McGlynn?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Everything listed in the Consent Agenda was distributed in advance of the meeting. Does anyone have any requests for something to be removed from the Consent Agenda and discussed or voted on separately? So may I have a motion to approve and accept all of the items listed in the Consent Agenda, including the minutes for the April 8, 2025 meeting?
I saw them all.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any dissent? Motion passes. Do we have anyone, Dr. Bailey, signed up for delegation?
No.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda will be the reorganization of the School Committee. So first, I'd like to welcome Mrs. McGlynn and Mr. Ellis, two new members. Thank you, and we look forward to working with you. Welcome.
Thank you.
And I would like to nominate Ron Hood for the position of Chairperson of the School Committee. This vote has consistently demonstrated strong leadership, a deep commitment to our schools, and a collaborative approach to decision-making. His experience, integrity, and dedication to student success makes him an ideal candidate to guide our committee in the coming year. I'm confident that out of his leadership, we will continue to make thoughtful student-centered decisions.
Do you have a motion to nominate Ron for Chairperson?
I'll second that nomination.
Thank you. So we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Houtcroft?
Yes.
And Mrs. McGlynn?
Yes.
So thank you, I appreciate the confidence there. And so with that, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Cordiero as Vice Chair. And so could I have a motion to nominate Mrs. Cordiero as Vice Chair?
I'll make that as a motion to nominate Melissa Cordiero as Vice Chair.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Houtcroft?
Yes.
And Mrs. McGlynn?
Yes.
Okay, so next, we need to reorganize some of the subcommittee assignments. So have they given us some thought? There's kind of three main committees, subcommittees, and then three that I would say are a little less labor-intensive, right, not heavy left. So policy being the first one. So I'd like to nominate Mrs. McGlynn and Mr. Ellis to serve on the Policy Committee. The Budget Subcommittee, Mr. Houtcroft has been serving. I'd like for him to continue, and I'd like to join him on the Budget Subcommittee. And then we have our Negotiations Subcommittee. So I'd like to nominate Mrs. Cordiero and myself on that committee. So I've currently been serving on negotiations. We're in the middle of negotiations, so I think it's important that we keep some continuity there or try to close this out. Next, we have the Southeastern Massachusetts Educational Collaborative Representative. So this is a one-person Subcommittee. And so I thought I'd put it out to Mrs. McGlynn and Mr. Ellis, the two of you would like to be our representative on that. I don't think it's necessarily a heavy left.
No, they're not. Once upon a time, they do conflict sometimes with our school committee meetings with other commitments that are bad, but they're doable. Next, please.
And then we have the Old Colony Appointment Committee. So my thought there would be to nominate Mr. Houtcroft, Mrs. Cordiero, and myself. And then the Superintendent Evaluation Committee, which I'm currently serving on, would be and continue to serve there and to have Mrs. Cordiero join. That committee is really responsible for working with the superintendent to put together her goals for the cycle. And obviously, those goals are then brought to the full committee to vote up. And then we have historically had the MAS-C Mass Joint Conference Delegate, one person go. I think historically, it's been the Chair. So I would suggest that it be the Chair or the Chair-appointed person. I don't think I necessarily need to go, but we'll figure out who could represent the committee when that comes up in the summer. And then, it's not a Subcommittee, but we've had Mrs. Cordiero on the master plan with the town. So I think it'd be good for you to continue with that. Another two members with thoughts and feedback coming through to that, which is important. Any discussion?
Just a little snack.
Yes.
We do want you to do that.
Yeah. Any thoughts, discussion? So could I have a motion to assign the committees as proposed?
Someone?
Second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any dissent? Same non-motion passes. Okay. Yeah, congrats. So Dr. Bailey, I don't see any old business here, so I will turn it over to you for new business.
First off, we're going to have a presentation on Responsive Classroom with the district. And I would ask Ms. Ruggieri, Ms. Bryant, and Ms. Pacetto to come up to the podium. And as you recall, we've invested a lot of money on this Responsive Classroom and the PD, so we're going to get a debate on that. So your presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Hill. Members of the School Committee, Dr. Bailey welcoming new School Committee members. Glad to have you. So Responsive Classroom at Akrishna Public Schools. With me tonight is Julianne Pacetto, who is the Assistant Principal at the Akrishna Elementary School, and Doria Bryant, the Assistant Principal at the Ford Middle School. So what is Responsive Classroom? It's a focus on making sure that academics are engaging, building positive community, effective classroom management, behavioral management, and developmental awareness. It helps educators create safe, joyful, and engaging classrooms. And it's a social and emotional skills that students need to thrive, and this is an evidence-based approach. Why Responsive Classroom? We have presented on this last year, I believe we did, when we started this with Ford Middle School. We had received some student and teacher feedbacks revealing a need for developing a stronger sense of belonging, increasing the student engagement, building the social, emotional, and academic skills, and fostering strong relationships between students and educators. And the behavioral conduct revealed a need for doing some work around this as well.
So, again, excuse me. At AES, we have implemented a morning meeting, which includes greeting, sharing, an activity, and a morning message. And you'll see an example of that in a minute. We've aligned our PDIS awards to related Responsive Classroom traits, such as responsibility, self-control, empathy, academic mindset, and perseverance. This is also addressing some of the at-risk behaviors and concerns. And from last year to this school year, we've seen a marked decrease from about 25% reduction in conduct cards for student-to-student behaviors. And here's the three.
Good morning, boys and girls, and we'll start our morning meeting. Um, like, here on the screen, okay? And what is going to be our meeting? Start students. What is our meeting going to be? And the school will start the meeting at the starting line. So, um, let's begin.
So each child has a piece of paper with their name on it, and they get greeted. Every day, we do, every day, everybody gets greeted. And then the next one is a morning message sharing combination.
Message, uh, boys and girls. And somebody raise their hand. Ooh, you're ready, uh, anybody raise their hand and tell us what the question is asking. Who can find the question in the morning message that I had asked you about this morning? Who first?
What do you think good citizens do?
Right. What do you think good citizens do? So what I want you to do is stay right there, thinking your spot right now, and we are going to come up. Uh, ready? How do my mom and A, B, and C, and the middle A, and B, go find your partner? I'm like offering, having trouble everything, and I have my partner. Nice job. One more B, try to find an A. Excellent. Okay, hands down, listen carefully, turn that spot ring on right now. Turn it on. Okay, ready? Right now, you and your partner are going to talk about what do you think good citizens do. That is going to be our central question for today, okay? Ready? We made it.
So for that, the question was part of the morning message. And then she moved on to the share, which was the question in part of the morning message. And if you'll see the way that they found their partner was really neat, wasn't it? They gravitated towards putting their arms up so that she knew that they all had a partner. So that's how we do morning meeting at AES and how we use Responsive Classroom.
Good evening, Chairperson, with persons, like, Dr. Bailey and members of the committee. I am here to talk about Responsive Classroom at Ford Middle School. Our day starts off with advisory, which is a time period between 8:00 and 8:20 every morning. In that time period, students are sharing, they're building relationships, they're creating a sense of belonging. And every staff member in the building has an advisory, and the numbers range from 10 to 12 students. Within that, they engage in the day's agenda. So on that agenda will be, for instance, what's for lunch, who's staying after school to support help, what games and sports are taking place. So everything's encapsulated in that advisory set of slides for the morning. The next is positive teacher language. This is where educators use intentional language to promote student engagement, accountability, and self-reflection. This can come in many different skills. The one that really stood out to me this week when I was observing was something that a teacher uses called "would you rather." They pose a question in the beginning, would you rather take a boat trip to the Bermuda Triangle, or would you rather take a satellite up into space? And so the kids have this ability to discourse on it, and they actually get to engage with each other's thoughts on it. They take accountability, and they self-reflect on each other's choices and how they relate and explain those choices. So it's really cute to watch. And then they throw it back at the teacher, and he gets his opportunity, she gets their opportunity to reflect on it and why. Interactive modeling is another skill. This is where the teachers play a really strong role in Responsive Classroom because they are modeling the skills for the students. And this comes into play strongly with fifth grade because they're coming into the new building, they're learning all new strategies and techniques. So some of the things they might model is how to access technology in the building. They may model where classroom supplies were, or how to actually clean up or organize a space. Academic choice. This is where the students are provided with meaningful choices in their learning, increasing engagement, ownership, and motivation. A lot of this comes into play with our applied learning in our building because it does offer specific choice to students now. They're engaging in collaborative discourse, and they're doing a lot of hands-on academics. So Responsive Classroom absolutely lends to that. It also lends to the practice of sharing technique, such as turning and talking, and leadership roles, which engage students in fostering responsibility, respect, and it reduces behaviors. Logical consequences. This is kind of where my practice comes into play because it's looking at respectful and connected consequences to help students reflect and grow from their actions. I have used an offshoot of this called restorative circles in the way I handle some of the consequences in the building. And with this, I've created, like, or tried to create safe spaces for students to discuss their conflicts, along with myself and their educators, so that we understand each other's perspectives and we can move forward with solutions and a plan. I've also tried to strengthen relationships and build communities between the educators and myself and the students in the building. We developed problem-solving skills and communications with our at-risk students, excuse me, and we encourage a sense of empathy, reflection, and accountability. And finally, the last collaborative rule creation. Students and teachers work together to establish shared expectations. I know a lot of the teachers in the building include their students with a voice in how they set the expectations for their classrooms. A lot of that could be simply, you know, instead of saying, "Stop running in the hallway," saying something positive like, "In the hallways we walk." And it's simple as that, and it changes the mindset from negative and almost hurt to something positive where the children will attach to it and reflect on it. Thank you for this opportunity for sharing with you this evening.
So last week in advisory, the students were asked to share with their advisor, what are two words that describe your advisory? And I happened to be in one of the classrooms where they did a snowball activity where the students wrote down two words and then rolled it up into a snowball, threw it in the middle of the room, they collected all of the words, and then the room that I happened to be in just kind and funny kept coming up over and over again. But then, so what the advisors then did was gather the most common responses and put this word splash together. And hopefully, somebody can see that a little better than I can, but fun, kind, loud, amazing, awesome, enthusiastic. I don't know if that says legit.
It does.
Which is a positive. Yes, interesting, joyful, so just really positive experiences that the students are having in advisory. And I wanted to show just a couple of videos. This first video shows a student-led part of the morning meeting where they're sharing out just all of that information about what's coming in the day. I know that was a little hard to hear, but they went on their lunch, which teachers were after school, which sports were after school, the wins for the day before in the sports, information about progress reports coming out. So this is all really important information for students to be familiar with. And then this is an example of a sharing. Share, either something that resonated with them, something they noticed, or something that they were howling, anything to do with. Yes, sure. I want to give that a quick, I think, to that. So how did you, in that, I was trying to lay out the beginning and it just went through? Now you're doing that. Because at the end, what did we notice at the end? Awesome. You're talking about pay it forward. Again? You had that too, similar thing? Anybody have something different? Go ahead, James.
I've got someone doing their homework. I'm watching the video.
Nice, made a connection to that. You were talking about, you know, yes, Karen.
I'm on page eight.
And, all right, we saw that that one act has started it. I want to go through it.
I also picked up those stuff yesterday, and I think you're familiar with the drop to groceries.
Yeah, to make a connection there. Anybody else want to share? Yes, sure.
A boy helped a grandma.
Right at the beginning, you talked about right at the beginning of the video? Yes. So another thing that I wanted to do today, kind of continuing on with that theme, is we talk a lot here about, like, our room here and how we share and we have a space where we can share. Sorry, the audio isn't great on these. And then the next two are really quick, but it's just showing that activity piece where there's two women happening to solve a problem. So these groups are kind of randomly made by grade level, and it provides students to be with other students that they may not travel with within the regular course of their day in the classes that they take. And then these are groups that are easy to kind of pull back to for certain other activities, for example, MCAS. Students are taking the MCAS with their advisor, a very familiar adult to them at this point in the year. So for Responsive Classroom training, to date, we, last school year, had a four-day, all-staff core course for middle school. This school year, we had four days of all-staff at AES, receiving the elementary core course. And then this year, the Ford Middle School also did a one-day workshop on improving teacher and student language. And I've listed the district's strategic initiatives that Responsive Classroom ties to, for your reference. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to take them.
Hi, everyone. The slides that, does everybody for the morning message have, like, the same slides? And who makes those?
So we make the morning message slides that have the lunch. It actually has Dr. Bailey saying the Pledge of Allegiance. It says, it has Dr. Bailey doing the Wildcat pledge. But then teachers like to individualize what game they're doing, what activity they're doing, what, the teachers like to make their own. So they have the main slides that we send to them every month with the main, the lunch, the date, and everything like that. But they create the slides for their morning message, and there's four components of the morning meeting. And I do know that the students are paying attention because when I walk along, they'll say, "I saw you this morning, Dr. Bailey," on, yeah, like, they do watch it. So that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, I think we'd like to take the meeting out of order and adjourn to executive session. We will reconvene in open session at the end of the executive session. So could I have a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair of social care of Unit 8 teachers.
Someone?
Second. And we do a roll call.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
And Mrs. McGlynn?
Yes.
It happens to involve a case of that life. That's what you're doing. Yes.
So the next item is the school budget. Dr. Bailey, I'll turn that over to you.
All right. Um, we've been having meetings for the past several months on a recommended budget, and in working with the town, we've been told that we need a different number. So originally, my recommended budget was $17,146,872. That clearly was not able to go through. So we put forth over $612,227 in cuts, okay? That will include people. And we've tried to do that so that we can maintain a sustainable school system over the next several years because we know that this is not a one-year problem. That brings our budget, and I'm asking for a motion to approve a $16,534,645 budget, which is an increase of only $140,982, at a 0.86% increase from last year. All, if this committee approves it tonight, we will post it all to the website, and that will, is what we're going forward with if the committee agrees.
So may I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommended fiscal year '25, '26 school operating budget of $16,534,645, which is a 0.86% increase from last year?
I'll make that motion as presented by the chair. Would you agree? Okay, this.
I have a second. I'll second. Any discussion? So I'll just make a comment. I just want to thank Dr. Bailey and the staff, who I know has worked pretty tirelessly over the last couple of weeks to put together this budget. This isn't easy. As Dr. Bailey mentioned, there are cuts. You know, so this committee, I think the administration recognizes the challenges that we currently have in the town and has put forth a good faith effort to meet those challenges. And I think the administration has tried to do so in a way that will impact our students' education in the most minimalist way that's possible, given the unfortunate circumstances that we're in. And, you know, we all take this situation very seriously. You know, there are people who are impacted by this, and, you know, it's serious stuff, and we think those people should be treated with the utmost respect and decency. So that being said, I guess we'll do a roll call. Or do we do a roll call?
Yes.
Yeah, roll call.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Houtcroft?
Yes.
And Mrs. McGlynn?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, let me just get situated here. Okay, so I'll make this very brief. Dr. Bailey, this is your evaluation, some of the evaluation for the fiscal years '24 and '25, right?
'23 to '25. Two to two.
Two year, two year. Two year, two year. You know, so if we look at the overall, and by the way, in full transparency, this evaluation was completed as the last committee kind of transitioned, so prior to our two new members here. So certainly, Mr. Howcraw, Mrs. Cudera, and myself and the two prior members completed this. But if we look at the overall rating, it's proficient. If we look across the four goal, there was student learning goal, professional practice goal, district improvement goal, two of them, three of four. And so, you know, it was met on three out of the four exceeded on another. You know, if we look at the exceed, there was a lot of commentary on how well some of the professional development opportunities are in the district. Certainly, that was highlighted. You know, I think one of the opportunities that was identified for improvement is just to continue to look at communications. And then I think there was some commentary around maybe looking at what we present at school committee meetings. So certainly, I think, I assume Dr. Bailey typically when the committee turns over, we have a meeting to a workshop to talk about how the new committee can work, if that could be together. So perhaps as part of that conversation, we can talk about what's presented at school committee and just make sure that we feel like we're presenting the rules.
Absolutely, it's the committee's agenda.
For sure, for sure, so we can take that. And then if I just look through some of these standards, like instructional leadership, that was exemplary, proficient management operations, exemplary in family and community engagement, proficient in professional culture, and then overall proficient. So it was a good evaluation, and that's obviously just a quick summary of where I'm at.
Thank you. I have to say, it's a great evaluation, but it also was a reflection of the team that I have and the people I surround myself with, and I am proud to be the superintendent in Acushnet and have the team that we have and the dedication and commitment to the students here. It's serious. I mean, there's people calling me on weekends, nights, it doesn't end at the end of the day, honestly. So, thank you. And if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, I'll just continue on with my section?
Please do.
Okay. So the next one is the SNEC use of facilities renewal, and that's just our yearly agreement with what they're pointing out, and I would just need a vote to accept that so that I can have it signed and moved on.
So can I have a motion to approve the SNEC use of facilities for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
I'll so, why that need?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any dissent? Seeing non-motion passes.
Okay. And as you know, the next one, anytime our students go out of state, we need school committee permission. So this is just one of those times where there's a field trip, I believe it's grade four, to Mystic, Connecticut. I'd be looking to get that approved in advance.
Can I have my motion to approve the out-of-state field trip to Mystic, Connecticut?
So motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing all those in favor?
Aye.
Any dissent? Seeing non-motion passes.
Okay. Next is the new business manager's contract. I'd be looking tonight for a vote and also signatures on his new contract, but we're looking to hire Aldo Petronio. He comes to us with lots of years of experience, not only on the school side but on the municipal side, and three members of the school committee did participate in his interview process. We did evaluate, vet out all the reference checks very thoroughly. Everybody I speak to speaks extremely highly of Mr. Petri-Petronio, and we're just thrilled that Acushnet could have someone. So we've been looking right now to start with a one-year contract to get that going, but he would basically start officially July first, and we would have some overlap with him and Patrick before Patrick departs us, just so we get that, you know, overlap and consistency.
So could I have a motion to approve the business manager contract for Aldo Petronio as recommended by the superintendent and hiring committee consisting of three school committee members?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to speak to that. I had the privilege of being, you know, having an interview with this person, and Mrs. Bailey said, Dr. Bailey said, that he had a wealth of experience, a wealth of knowledge, and also struck me the two things that his wisdom, and then this is something that, you know, I really, really struck me. He really, really reflective, he's very familiar with the Department of Revenue guidelines, state laws, all those things that go into this, which makes this decision very unique. I think, you know, as stated before, we're very fortunate to have him, and I'm looking forward to, you know, working with him. I know he has a tough act to follow.
He does.
So I think that's going to be one of his challenges, and I think I'm going to, you're going to tell him the first day, you know, that we're losing a great person and has made great contributions to our school system, and so it's a tough act. But anyway, I'd say we're very fortunate. We've bitten the bullet on this one.
Yeah, and I'll just comment, not having been involved in the interview process, I think that presenting a one-year contract is essentially to test the waters up with this gentleman before we move on to future years is very wise. Gives us a chance to really see how he's going to operate, and frankly, if he can just jump in two feet first and not try to speed himself too. Yeah. It's a wise one.
Anything else? And I will begrudgingly agree with Mr. Howcraw that it's a, it will be a tough act to follow, as much as it pains me to say that, I have to say. So we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Hid?
Yes.
Mrs. Cudera?
Yes.
Mr. Alex?
Yes.
Mr. Howcraw?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lurin?
Yes.
Thank you. And then the last thing, other items, I just, we're going to talk more about this next meeting, but I just wanted to let you know that we were notified today from the One-Eight Foundation that our Ford Middle School has received and been accepted into the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six One-Eight Foundation Applied Learning Leadership Institute cohort. And just to summarize it, we've been awarded eleven thousand, four hundred dollars in grant funding, which will be distributed in June twenty-twenty-five to help offset costs associated with institute travel and pilot implementation. So because the staff and the team and the coaches, the administrators have done such an exceptional job with the other One-Eight grants, we've become a model, and, you know, it's, I just can't say enough about the people involved in this and what they're doing. So I appreciate that, you'll definitely hear more about that, but I wanted to just let you know that we were excited to hear today that we did receive another grant from them. And they're very competitive, a lot of districts are trying to get them, and we're doing really well with it based on the support that we're giving our teachers. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, so do we have, is technology just a...
Yeah, so the director of technology gave a very thorough report purposely, knowing that we have two new members with us, just to give you a little update over the last couple of years. We've done significant work, Mr. Missler and his department, it's been amazing between the tech, the security, the infrastructure, all of it. And if you read through that report, I think you'll feel like you have a good idea of where the district has been and where we're going. Certainly, if you have any questions, you can take those.
Any questions?
It was very thorough.
All right, thank you.
And then business manager, Mr. Mackenzie, presenting or...
You're not the hot shot. Sure, person, who is school committee, thank you for your time tonight, welcome to the two new members, goodbye to the, no, I have one more meeting, so, no, it's been a pleasure, and I appreciate the kind words on the vote transitioning to a new business manager. It's a lot of work that's been done here and a lot of work to continue to do, and it is been a sweet, you know, departure for me, but I'll be paying attention like I always do, probably watching more meetings than I should be, but, you know, we'll make sure that that transitions as seamless as possible. And you are in great hands, I've met at length with Mr. Petronio, and, you know, he knows his stuff, you know, and his experience just, you know, circles mine, so I don't doubt that he'll be able to do a great job here as well. So into my report, you know, the FY twenty-five budget, this is the critical, you know, impasse of the budget, if you will, you know, we're at the end of spending ultimately, other than salaries. We calculate what we have in savings or overspending. Generally, it's savings due to high school tuition contracts, vacancies throughout the year, and then just strategic savings, whether due to grants or not just other changes along the way. Typically, we have budget subcommittee meetings to discuss those savings and what we will do with them. You know, priority for me publicly would be to refund the special education reserve fund that we tapped into last year to balance the budget. Special education costs can be exorbitant, and they can impact you at any time, you know, unpredicted, with a move-in or any, you know, sudden change, so, you know, we will be discussing that, if there's savings in the tuitions, the high school tuitions, as we discussed, we've talked about returning that money to the town, because ultimately those savings come when a student leaves our tuition high schools and goes to Old Colony, which is, you know, a tuition they pay for. And again, you know, we'll look to the school committee for any other advice on those savings once I have a more finite savings figure for you. We, earlier in the agenda, adopted the FY twenty-six budget, you know, again, it was a grueling process for all of us. We did put our best foot forward, you know, people will be impacted by the budget, and I know, you know, the superintendent will speak more to that in district in the coming week, but, you know, we're putting forward a sustainable plan to maintain, you know, what we do here and strategize to continue those services, not now, not next year, but, you know, three, four, five, six years out. Onto facilities, unfortunately, since we last met, the town ballot took place and we failed to succeed in the debt exclusion for the air environment quality and green energy project. We will be having discussions on the next steps. I know we were admitted that this was the fix and it was not necessarily a Plan B or C or D, but at this point, you know, a potential half-a-million-dollar grant is on the line to be forfeited. We know that the town has offered some capital that potentially we could muster up to make some sort of change, but we'll have to talk about those strategies as a group and phase in projects and whatever else might be out there, because we know we need to do something, and that's important.
And can I just add, I think the board's selectmen at the last hearing agreed that we need to do something, and so I think we certainly look forward to engaging in those conversations to see what we can do, because this will continue to be a problem for the district.
Hundred percent. Related to the facilities, we also know we've had water intrusion in our phys ed closet at AES, though there were no signs or symptoms of any sort of mold when the contractor took apart the wall, they actually took apart a three-by-six-foot section to pull out bricks to see why the water was, you know, intruding into the building, and ultimately, it became a matter of the, the, flashing, thank you, but all the materials protected properly with, you know, weather protective material, that they did not see mold or vision mold being a problem. However, we do need to address that problem as it wears down our infrastructure. So we've moved forward with a design bid build fee for forty thousand, five hundred dollars that will help us see what the actual construction will cost, and our intentions are to take that figure and approach the town for, you know, a capital need there so we can, again, address the envelope. And we'll keep the committee and the town up to date on that as that process, you know, comes underway. Excuse me, it's late. Food service, we've been talking about new equipment in the cafeterias, more recently, the combination ovens, the combi ovens have been installed in both schools. They're this fantastic piece of equipment that if you are ever passing by and school lunch is running or breakfast, I recommend checking them out. Their ovens, they steam, they air fry, they cool themselves. It gives us a lot more flexibility to improve the quality of meals that are going out, whether it's menu changes or the, you know, eliminating the need to reheat and just cook fresher and closer to lunches. So those have been installed, and those are kind of part of the strategy in that kitchen and that department to improve, because in the past, school committee has, you know, voiced concerns about meal patterns and what we're offering, and we're making great strides there, and we actually are looking forward to reporting on some of those next school committee member, whether, next school committee meeting, whether a report or presentation. We'll talk to the superintendent about that, but we were very excited about those pieces of equipment. And then transportation, if anyone out there is watching or paying attention this late at night or on the, you know, the stream on YouTube, registration for twenty-five, twenty-six is open, and it is critical that you register whether you use the bus or you do not use the bus. It helps us get an idea of how many riders are on our buses, what roads we can change, what stops we can change, and ultimately, if we ever get to a point where we don't have enough riders that we could reduce buses, it would bring savings to our district on that front. So, you know, accurate data is imperative on our transportation, and that starts with the registration process, that it's timely, that it's completed, and it gives us time to plan now into the summer and then give that information back out to you, the community, in preparation of the next school year, so you know where to put your kids at a stop and what time the bus is coming, so on and so forth. And then just to wrap up, other matters, the town meeting date has been changed from Monday, June second, to Monday, June sixteenth, so please come out and support, you know, whatever initiative you believe in in the town, but particularly, you know, our school budget and related articles that we may have. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mackenzie. Do we have any school committee member reports?
So enough.
All right. Why don't you give me the opportunity?
I'll skip.
So there's some other things in our packets, communication and information, so district newsletter, AES newsletter, MCAS newsletters, our air environment quality update that went out to staff and our personnel report, any questions there? No? No? So, I will say, before we break, our next school committee meeting is going to be on Monday, June ninth, at six P.M. here, and we will immediately follow the pride award ceremony that will begin at five-thirty P.M. in the FMS cafeteria, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so we encourage everybody to attend that ceremony?
Absolutely.
Could I have a motion to adjourn to next meeting?
So who?
That was great. We'll do a roll call.
A lot of people don't want to go home yet, I guess.
Mrs. Hid?
Yes.
Mrs. Cudera?
Yes.
Mr. Alex?
Yes.
And Mrs. Lurin?
Yes.
You being a section?